Information meeting for Monday, October the first, 2018. We're going to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to any justice for all.
Nice soft cheer.
Bring him up.
Get back to you and, uh, Bill Leonard, we'll get back to you. We're going to jump to information first.
Okay, actually, this is our favorite time of the year, um, I'm sorry, of the month. We're going to actually start with our Students of the Month celebration, and we're going to begin with Mr. Schwartz from Harrison Park.
Thank you, Dr. Harris.
And actually, Mr. Schwartz, he went to Deer Valley today and actually drove back just for the occasion, because one of my announcements was that Deer Valley started today, and there was 302 students in grade five throughout this week that are going to be on the trip. It's an amazing trip. We've done it every year since I've been here, and it probably will... How many years have we started Deer Valley? I'm not even sure of the total number of years.
Dr. Marston, Dr. Bonney started it.
Late eighties.
Yeah, it's been a good... Well, you're probably pushing 30 years, yeah?
We have a lot of teacher volunteers up there, and I appreciate them giving up their time and evening activities with, from their family. But that being said, thank you for coming back. Hey, I guess you got up tomorrow, too.
Yep.
Okay.
Jason is a hard-working, fourth-grade student who is caring and very considerate of others. He models respectful behavior and is an eager participant in all learning opportunities in the classroom. Jason consistently gives 100% of his energy to whatever task is at hand, works hard to achieve success, and is dedicated to learning and taking the next step to achieve his educational goal. Jason enjoys math, science, junk-box war challenges, and getting good grades at school. Outside of school, he enjoys playing sports, video games, and jumping on the trampoline with his friends. When he grows up, he'd like to be a police officer or a teacher. Jason is a great friend to all his classmates and isn't afraid to stand up for someone in need. Over the past four years, he has earned the most of any of our HP students' gotcha tickets for doing good deeds and being polite and caring towards students and staff members. Mrs. Kleinschmidt, Jason's reading, or ELA, teacher, states, "In reading class, Jason takes pride in his work. He is the first person to get started on assignments and works carefully and neatly. If a classmate needs a partner, Jason is quick to invite that student into his group." Jason has also been working towards meeting a challenging reading goal in his accelerated reader, reading program. He has already met reading requirements for the first nine weeks of school and is striving to achieve more. Jason is on track to set a new personal reading record this school year. Mrs. Simpson's, Jason's math and science teacher, states, "In math class, Jason works hard to limit errors and gain confidence with his math facts. He is always willing to work with classmates and team up to share ideas. Jason's always polite when working with, in a small group with a teacher and maintains a positive attitude if he makes mistakes." Jason also expresses a deep love for his 20 pets. He has, he has one bearded dragon, nine fish, nine birds, and one dog that he takes care of at home. He tells many stories about his birds, especially Nana, the bird who does not like homework. When Jason has free time, he likes to research information about his birds and share stories with Mrs. Simpson. He likes to share his knowledge with his classmates, and she often finds him researching with a partner or reading a book for more information. His excitement for learning is contagious. Jason is one of the nicest and kindest students that I have come across in a long time. He is a quiet young man, yet has the self-confidence to do the right thing even when people are not looking. His character is an example for all of us to follow. Jason possesses many of our school's core values and is overall a great kid. On behalf of the students and staff of Harrison Park Elementary, I'd like to congratulate Jason Whitefield for being the Elementary Student of the Month.
Do you have anything that's going on at Harrison Park right now that you want to share?
Um, I was going to mention, we have our Deer Valley, Harrison Parks, Monday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We had our treasure map celebration. I believe that's 12 years now. We had 390 students out of our 450 participate and complete the summer reading requirements for the school, so we were very excited about that number. The teachers are participating in writing professional development. They started that over the summer, and they're doing a book club throughout this first semester. So we made, we felt like we made great strides with our reading last school year, and we're going to build on that success this upcoming year. And last year, I believe I mentioned that we did our Rachel's Challenge, where we started... The idea is to start a positive chain reaction, and the students picked up again on this year, and they raised over $3,000 for the hurricane victims by bringing in change. So the kids are always looking for positive things to do, and that was a, a great way to kick off the school year with that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Can I ask, Mr. Schwartz or Dr. Harris, how many schools actually were able to go to Deer Valley? I know we're, there's not many. I know we're exceptional in that. Any idea?
I'm not sure of the count. When I do go up there, there's a lot of flags representing the different schools that are displayed, and I'm not sure offhand. I don't want to get me wrong.
Franklin Regional goes. I think Moon goes there. There is a handful of districts.
There's just a handful, is what I'm saying. I was really thankful we're able to do what we're doing, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the drive. Next, we have Mr. Solomon for Trafford Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'd like to introduce Will Drystack. Will, come on up, please. Right there is good. Will was a, an eighth grader at Trafford Middle School. He's here with his brother Jake, who's in third grade, right, Jake? Stand up. There you go. And he attends Trafford Elementary School, and his sister Abigail, who's, who's in the middle school as a sixth grader. Abby, you want to give a wave? There you go. And Will is the son of Tammy and Jason. Will's a strong student. He's currently enrolled in all of Trafford Middle School's advanced classes. He works really hard at his grades, currently has all As and Bs, and really always has. When I talked to Will, he, I asked him, I said, "What, what do you like about middle school? What subjects do you like?" And he said, "I like them all. I just really like it." He said he hasn't thought about post, post-secondary school yet, which I said, "He's got time." But he definitely knows that someday he wants to be a pastor. Will plays baseball in the Miracle League and is involved in his youth group, is a counselor yearly at the kids camp at his church. He volunteers for the needy in our community, and is involved for the Warrior, Warrior for Christ Club at Trafford Middle School. The teachers at Trafford Middle School were ecstatic about Will winning this award. They say he's a, a quiet leader and leads by his actions. He's conscientious, works hard. He prays every day at lunch, is kind. He's helpful to any and everyone. He looks you in the eye and says hello every day, and that's true with staff and students. He knows, I think, every student in that school. But he's sincere about it, and you can tell. He stops and says hello and asks you how your day is going, or how your weekend was. Even said, "I look pretty good tonight." Right, Will? There is nothing that holds Will back. There are times that he, he physically stumbles. He kind of gets in a hurry and stumbles and, and falls, but yet he pops right back up and moves on. But that's his character about everything. That's how he handles everything in his life. So Will, congratulations, Student of the Month. We're extremely proud of you.
And finally, we have from the high school, Mr. Cap. And prior to your, I'm sorry, Mr. Solomon, what's going on at Trafford?
Nothing capital.
You almost said snappy, correct?
I'm sure, just like the other middle school and, and the high school, it's, it's homecoming, so our student council had been busy preparing for that pep rally on Friday and preparing for the parade on Friday. One-to-one Chromebooks are going really well. The students really seem to love it. They, they don't take them home, but they use them all day, and it has really made a difference, so we, we thank you for that. The stage lights and the new curtains began to be installed actually today, and hearing that they should be done this, this month. Our student council took on a school store. They, they sell materials for school, but also spirit wear, Penn Trafford spirit wear. So if you're ever in town, stop down, take a look. And the SRO, the Trafford Police Officers that we have in the building have been really interacting with, with children already, and it's, it's been really nice to see, really, really effective in terms of their appearance. So thanks.
And what was the theme today for Spirit Week?
Today was Sports Logo.
Sports Logo.
Tomorrow's Beach Day.
Penn Middle had a beach day today, and the high school had...
White, blue.
Red, white, and blue. So it's kind of neat to see the different themes, but it makes for a fun week.
It does. It does.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cap, before you give our, your Students of the Month, you brought something that you wanted to kind of share with the board, just to make us more aware of?
Yeah, it was brought to my attention, I watched a webinar through PSBA last week with Mr. Quilio and Mrs. Horvath with the epidemic of the vapes, and how it's an issue just not in Western Pennsylvania, Penn Trafford, but statewide and nationally. This little jewel is what they're smoking now. You can see how small it is, and I'll pass it around. This is worth one pack of cigarettes.
Cap, excuse me, could you maybe address the audience as well? Maybe they don't see it.
That's what they're smoking now. We're catching students. It's this small. But, you know, in the past, and I do have an array here which I will pass around, they're as big as this, you know? So they're all different sizes, and this container of top fills up, and that's probably about 20 of these little jewels. So you can see that it's, it's unbelievable where these kids are buying it. You have to be, you know, 18, but they're having no problem purchasing these. I brought all different types. I'll pass them around. You can see what, what's being found. They look like pens. I have some that look like credit cards, other ones that, I mean, they're all different shapes and sizes. You can buy it, and this vape shop right up here sells them all. So, and they sell them in togos and the sheets. A couple of things what we've learned when we watched the webinar, or you got this one too, you can see all the mother. With the webinar, finally, the, the school system and the state are finally coming, coming out with some legislation and definitions of electronic cigarettes, nicotine products, and nicotine delivery products. Actually, next week, Student Policy 222, 323, which is Employee Policy and Community Policy 904, will be amended and updated, which will have the word vape, an electronic smoking device within the policy itself. So it was an eye-opener after speaking with individuals at different schools. It's just not a problem here, but it's statewide. It's tough, it's, it's tough to catch up with this. Students are not chewing as much as they used to, and I don't remember the last time I caught a student chewing or smoking cigarettes. It's, it's all the vapes. But I was also told from this webinar, the new vape juice that they're putting in there is odorless, so you can't even smell it. Before, it was all fruity, and you could probably smell the bag and smell it in there, but now you can't even smell the vape. And what we're doing here at PT now, anytime we catch that, a vape where you add the juice, we are checking it for other illegal substances such as marijuana, because that has been here at school before, and other schools with it, like, epidemic, as I stated. Not so much here with the dab and the oils, marijuana oils, but it is an issue. You can see what we're batting here, not only at the high school, but at the middle school as well.
Can we allow parents to see this?
Sure.
I wanted to compliment you guys. When I first read about this in school board material, I went up to see our, our high school principals. They were already a year ahead. They pulled a drawer, hey, Cap pulled a drawer out, and there was a bag full. So they've been dealing with this ahead of the curve, and I really appreciate that our, our staff at the high school is really on top of things. So again, my compliments that you guys are there. Thank, and also meeting, seeing the webinar. I don't know how many people would do that, but you guys took it serious, so thank you.
These small jewels that are being, are passed around on the black market, they're $45 going for right now. The big ones, that big one I have there that's being passed around, that's about $200 to $250 vape.
And the small one, look what's up.
$45 a jewel, yeah. It's going for $45.
So are these as addictive as cigarettes?
They are. The, the thing with, with the jewels, you can get different percentages of nicotine. So I think it is, I don't know what the lowest is, but I know you can buy different levels of it, and it's, it's highly addictive. The problem is the amount of lead and other substances that are in there, they're just not sure, but they know there's lead present in these vapes.
But they're also carcinogens.
So those little wee jewels, as you said, those are refillable devices that they...
Those are not refillable. Oh, it's, actually, they take the little charging pieces out and buy a new one. They look so much like a thumb drive that we're finding them in our lost and found as people are bringing them in, and that's where we find a lot of them, because parents think they're just a thumb drive that a student dropped. Meanwhile, they're a jewel.
They're like smoking cigarettes, is that what you're saying?
And that one looked like a, like a remote for a car or something.
Yeah. They're all different shapes and sizes. It's, it's interesting, yeah.
All right, now, can you go ahead and do the Student of the Month, please?
Sure. I'd like to welcome Antonio DeMarcus as Penn Trafford High School Student of the Month. Antonio is accompanied by Mom Lisa and Dad John. Antonio currently has a 4.45 GPA as an, and is involved in numerous extracurricular activities. Couple of things, he's on the Core Team at St. Barbara's. He volunteers for the Level Green Women's Club and Level Green Lions Club. He's currently working part-time at Mathnasium as a tutor to help students at all levels. He is also the CAP Chairman of the Kentucky Project, founder and president of the Math Club, member of the Academic Quiz Team, President of the PT Students for Life, and a member of the National Honor Society and Science National Honor Society. Few things that his teachers stated about him. Mrs. Manny Papelli stated, "Antonio never backs down from a challenge, and this is an admirable trait. As a teacher, Antonio contributes insight. He gives us with careful thought, and it has been an honor to witness his growth of his educational experience in literature. Congratulations on this honor." Mrs. Corna stated, "Antonio is an inspiring student. He is a young man that truly has a love for learning and is excited about doing it so each day. He is pleasant, intelligent, and routinely works beyond the requirements of his coursework. I can truly say that he encourages others around him to take a greater interest of learning as well. Penn Trafford is fortunate to have Antonio." Mrs. Smith stated, "Antonio is a wonderful student in person. I've had the pleasure of knowing Antonio since he was a freshman at PT. Over the years, he demonstrated determination, leadership, and dedication to the community by serving as our club president, planning informative meetings and helping with community service projects. He's the type of student every teacher loves to have in class." Mrs. Popovich states, "Antonio is one of the most dedicated CAP members we have. He is a four-year member and currently serves as the Community Action Program Chairman of the Kentucky Project. Always very willing to volunteer for projects and help in any way. I always receive compliments from his project sponsors of what a respectful and helpful young man he is. I am very proud of him." Mrs. Ljonski states, "Antonio brings so much to the classroom and the world around him. He is infectious. Antonio is kind, funny, brilliant, responsible, engaging, generous, ambitious, and has an unrivaled passion for math. It has been my privilege of having Antonio as a student this year and supporting his vision for the Mathematics Club." Finally, when Antonio graduates from high school, he plans to attend either Pitt, Penn State, Cornell, or Case Western focusing on engineering. Congratulations to Antonio for being Penn Trafford High School Student of the Month.
And if actually the three Students of the Month, if you can come up and shake the hands with everyone around the table. We usually go over and shake your hands when you get in your picture, but because Georgia did that earlier, it kind of threw me off. In September of next year, we invite you back to the very first home game because we're, where we have a celebration in your honor. I know you might be out, you might be out of state, or you might be with some of your choices. I think most of them are going to stay. Okay? Just thought about that afterwards. To get this honor, we have 3,840 students. Every year, we choose 27 for the Students of the Month, so that kind of shows you how hard it is to achieve this. All three of you were incredible. You had excellent, everything they read about you was, was amazing, so please keep that up. But make sure you invite your parents, because, and thank your parents, because with their help and support, it keeps you doing all these activities and keeps you going. So thank you so much. And parents, thank you as well. After they come around the board, if you want to leave, you're more than welcome to. No one has ever stayed, so you might be the first, but hey, good night. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job, Mike.
Thank you, Roger.
It's a monthly...
Congratulations.
Really?
Congratulations. What engineering are you making?
Electrical.
My brother, Pitt, electrical, I have his computer science. Hey, congratulations. Congratulations.
Antonio, this is number two.
Congratulations.
Number seven. Antonio is a three-time winner.
That could be.
My son's a Penn Stateer.
Good choices.
Well, here I am.
Well, if they win, then they're little, there's no way. I mean, we've been doing this for like six, seven years.
Congratulations, young man. You're allowed to smile.
Thank you.
What church you go to?
Age, grade, and all Texas.
Glad to hear that.
Oh, you are?
Rich and I are year apart.
Mm-hmm.
That's all right, I don't care.
I couldn't care a lot.
But only once you close your eyes.
I should have sent my...
So seeing red.
Did you write?
I mean, it's...
Mr. Cap, do you have something else that you wanted to read about the school report going on?
Mr. Cap?
Yes.
Is there any high school report?
Yes. I don't know if you're aware that we had the Old Glory Relay last week. It started in Boston, so people carry the flag away from Boston to San Diego, start on 9/11, and it will finish on Veterans Day. Our kids participated in it. All of our students were down at the stadium, as well as Lisa Popovich actually led the band around the stadium, and the students played, and they cheered, and it was very well-participated by, by all students. Everyone screamed and cheered on the band and Mrs. Popovich. Homecoming this week, Friday night, Saturday night is the dance at 7:30, so if anybody's interested, there'll be about 700 to 800 students here, so if you'd like to come see that, you're more than welcome. It'll be very busy up here.
Standing room only.
Yes.
And hot.
It's very hot. So that's Saturday night. The fall play rehearsals for Hunchback of Notre Dame have begun, and we're moving along with that. That's coming up very soon. Last week also, we had a Keystone celebration for all students that passed the test, as well as showed growth. That was down at the stadium, and we gave the students a couple of periods to relax down there, have fun, and we brought the ice truck in and they enjoyed it themselves. And believe it or not, we're about nine weeks away for Keystone's already, first week of, of December, so we're preparing for those and very busy with that, preparing the students for that, coming up in nine weeks.
As you gave your report, Colton, did he take most of everything that you had on your sheet? I saw your head going off. Sorry. Colton, please come up and give us a report to what's in our high school.
You're looking sharp tonight.
Football team's turn is going quite well, aren't they?
Yeah, we're, we're powering through as much as we can. I'm, I'm sorry if I sound a little bit stuffy. I'm fighting through a little bit of a cold today. But, um, other than what Mr. Cap said, there's not a time going on at the high school. I know that quiz team practices have also begun. We do tape our show on the 18th of next month, I bel, well, actually, it's this month, I guess, now. So we go down there on the 18th at 12:30, so Hometown IQ gets taped. As well as that, we have had practices starting for the mock trial team. We were also invited to attend a competition at La Salle University out towards Philadelphia area. And other than that, a lot of the sports teams have been pretty successful lately. Field hockey has a game tonight, and this is one of their must-win games to win the Whipples, so good luck to them as much as I can give.
Hold on, a quick question for you. The quiz bowl team that you were referring to?
Yes.
You won your first match, correct?
We haven't had a match yet.
Last year. I thought, I thought I saw Penn Trafford High School on, on hometown.
We made it to semifinals last week.
Okay, so you made it to semifinals. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, Colton, I wanted to ask, what's that, I saw kids, the science about the Mini-Thon raising money. What's the Mini-Thon?
Mini-Thon is a project that we're coordinating with the Four Diamonds Program, and it's basically going to be a Penn State Thon just for a high school, you know? So a lot, a lot smaller, but these students are doing a project. They've, a couple of them, including our mascot, John Heimball, went all the way across the state to Hershey to go to the actual hospital out there, the Penn State campus. And basically, they're doing fundraising throughout the entire year, and it's all going to culminate in one large dance at the end.
And the money's going to go to...
It's going to go to the Four Diamonds Program, which helps support childhood cancer.
Childhood cancer.
Mm-hmm. Hold on. I think you might have said that the mock trial team.
Yes.
Now, what cases do you, could you tell us just a little bit about that?
Um, so far, we don't truly have a case. We get our case materials November 1st, but we do have a small case that we do for a tournament at St. Vincent University. It's an opening and closing tournament, so each team gets up and they give an opening statement and a closing statement. I'm doing the prosecution opening.
Now, is that in the evening, or is that going today?
That's going to be a daytime competition.
Sounds neat.
And the homecoming team is?
Cities.
Enjoy homecoming. Thank you for...
Thank you.
And I just almost forgot to remind you that, and this is from the video team, we're so proud that the National Emmys, we had three students who were nominated for a National Emmy. They're one of five finalists in the country, and they are Ryan Mickey, Max Haberberger, and John Robbins. And it's for their work they did on the Make-A-Wish last year. So it's very exciting and such an honor. Last year, they won the local Emmy, actually, they won two local Emmys. It was just amazing. The work that Mr. Vinton does with his classroom and his students is just unbelievable, and it's so proud to see them getting further and further every year with all the work and being recognized. So there's 26 regional chapters nationwide, and to make it that far and be nominated is unbelievable, so be excited. And the words are on the 18th, in case somebody wants to watch.
And they got a grant, am I correct? Didn't they win a grant?
Um, they got a grant, well, they actually received a huge grant last year from equipment, from a donation, but can't remember the amount. I think it was $90,000.
And I thought I heard $90,000.
They really, my teachers last year, I think they raised close to $330,000 on the teacher grants, which helped make it that total, because usually we do all 250. Hopefully this year, we beat that, because I know I have about eight came in already, so. And just want to give you one last reminder from my opening remarks is that last week, Mr. Bernier and I sent out a press release, and I just want to give you an update, that the teachers did present us with an offer today. The board did talk about the offer in executive session, and we are meeting with the teachers with the state mediator tomorrow evening to attempt to get the contracts solved, so I'll keep you updated. And that's all I have for my information.
All right, thank you, Dr. Harris. So we're going to go back to special reports, IU number seven, Bill Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Harris and the board, it's my pleasure to introduce Cindy, Cindy Camion, and she's from the, she'll be our IU, the IU representative from the intermediate unit. She's, works up there as a, in the, our human resources administrator. I would like, could you please welcome Cindy? Would you please stand up?
[applause]
Thank you. Robert.
Hey, do you have anything else for your report?
Oh, that's it. I do okay on the pronunciation.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Career Tech, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last meeting was the 19th of last month, September. Next meeting is October 17th. But I also want to stand, I'm standing corrected, my good friend here, Mr. Namick, last month, he told me about the motorcycle fee. You know, old JOC, all the board members, we thought $100,000. We thought the student paid the fee. And he says, "No." He says, "His wife, I think your son," he said, "went for free." And I says, "Oh, man, I got a phone call." And I, next morning, I made another phone call, and it's 16 hours of instruction, plus the fees, motorcycle, and anything else. I don't know what else, but it is paid for by the Department of Motor Vehicles. All that training, they furnish everything. Our tax dollars goes to give... Pay the training of the motorcycle. And I... They don't do that for kids who want to drive a car, but they're doing it for people... Kids, adults, too. They want to drive a motorcycle, they pick up the whole fee. And the Career Tech, those people, fortunately, my whole board ran last year to the Career Tech Christmas function, which was excellent. That parking lot, they rent the parking lot, because they're doing construction work or something that they usually do at the Advanced Technology Center, where the old Volkswagen plant used to be, and Community College, et cetera. And they says that... It's a different building, sorry. But they said they're doing construction. They said, "Can't get a point." So, they used our parking lot at Career Tech, and it depends how many times you use it, we're going to make between $3,600 and $4,800 for rental. And again, the Department of Motor Vehicles is paying for all that. And I just thought, "You're right, Mr. Namick. I stand corrected." But I thought, "If that used $100, I thought that was even cheaper." And then you told me it was free, and it definitely was free.
And there are actually, I believe, three different levels of courses you can take. The first level is obviously beginner, and if you pass the classroom and the driving portion, you get your motorcycle license right there. And then there's like a second, which is if you have already have your motorcycle, have a license, you can take an advanced course to get tips on how to handle different situations and that. And I believe there's a third level, which is even more advanced. The first level for the beginners, you use their motorcycle, and the second and third levels, you can use your own bike for that.
What are they using?
I forget what... They're just like 350s, 400s, smaller bikes.
Yeah.
Free.
Yeah. Is that... Where's that at? I'll put it to you.
Enroll online, Career Tech.
Career Tech.
Yeah. Well, you was last year built the Christmas function.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and I'll go... Our three-day enrollment totals, 1,040, same as last year. 511 a.m. students, 529 p.m. students. Now, here's the enrollment figures for the... I got the top six groups here. Auto technology is number one, 121 kids. Health occupation, number two, 93 kids. Cosmetology, number three, 87 kids. Welding's number four, 64 kids. Graphic arts is 48 kids. Number five is carpentry, 47 kids. And next group, culinary, electrical, and power line, and robotics, all have 45 kids.
Nick, isn't a welding cap, though, 64?
Yeah, 64. That's half of that because of the booths.
It's cap, it's 60.
With the total enrollment, even the auto technologies, you know, the half two.
Oh, yeah.
It's a.m. and p.m., because we expanded those booths, and there's still wait lists. Welding is very popular.
It keeps growing, and there's a waiting list for the welding. So, there's an excellent program. Those kids walk out with a dog, just screaming.
And if you can get any kind of... Want to go to service, get the underwater welding, that pays big money. That is a real big money. The next meeting is on the 17th of... No, this month. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Prior to tonight's meeting, we did have an executive session where we discussed the contract negotiations and took some legal advice. I'm going to put that... Take the meeting back to Dr. Harris.
Sure. Next week, under athletics and extracurricular, we're going to ask you to approve volunteer coaches, employee personnel, accept resignations. Under budget and finance, we're going to ask you to approve reimbursement for credits earned, authorize representatives to serve on the WIU Joint Purchasing Consortium for multi-purpose paper and fuel, grant permission to advertise jointly for the purchase of supplies. We won't have anything under the next three categories. Under personnel and curriculum, we're going to ask you to approve substitute teachers, employee personnel, accept resignations, approve leave requests, and authorize the admin to approve new parent volunteers. Under Policy Public Relations, Legislative Title II, we're going to ask you to accept and file Information Committee meeting minutes of September 4, 2018, give tentative approval of new and revised board policies and admin regulations, and give approval to rescind board policies and admin regulations. We don't have anything under taxes, insurance, incentives.
All right, now, it is the time of the meeting for recognition of visitors. We do have one person who signed up. The following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president, and no participant may address her question of board member individually. I may interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Christina Hirschberger, would you please stand up to the mic, please?
Hello? Can you hear me? No. You might... I might not even need this. My name is Christina Hirschberger. I live at 1100 Red Oak Drive, Harrison City. I came tonight being concerned about the teachers' contract. I was glad to hear that you met this evening, and hopefully, something will be passed soon. I kind of thought when we started back to school this year that there would be a contract for the teachers, and I feel very passionately about having a good contract for the teachers. My children go to school here. They love this district. They have nothing but wonderful things to say every single day when they come home from Penn Middle and from the high school.